Okay, I'm going to recap because we couldn't get the recorder started. I've called the meeting to order and we've passed the first resolution accepting the agenda as outlined. So we move on to number four and under number four, we will be talking about the timeline and number of days served. Because there are different opinions as to what days have been served or how many days have been served. And that was made clear in emails back and forth between Counselor Gade and myself. I had a timeline supplied to me by administration and Counselor Gade had had a different timeline, I guess, or a different number of days served. So perhaps though, Counselor Gade, we could just go over each thing and see where the difference is and maybe we can come to an agreement on the number of days that have actually been served.
I know in my request, I asked that we bring to the meeting the actual resolutions and the report on the appeal and then the resolution where we upheld the appeal as a council. Did any of that get brought tonight?
I have had access to it, but I don't have copies.
Unfortunately, if I wasn't locked out of all that, I would be able to print them from all that. But I'm not able to because I'm again locked out of all that. In fact, I have been since before I was suspended. I keep getting locked out of all that even when I'm a member of council. So I have to go to the municipality's website. It seems to be the only way I'm allowed to get information that's was posted there. I assume it's the same as what would be in all that. So if we look at it, the timeline that's provided here has two different suspensions on the bill. It would appear to indicate the first suspension was served by the end of December 4th. Do we all agree that that one is certainly over, at least by now? There's no possible way I'm suspended from the first one because the sheet clearly indicates December 4th was the end of it.
Okay, it started June 1st and then you had submitted an appeal. And it restarted on the evening of the 28th. So my numbers are, and you're not contesting the first one.
You know, even if I did, I don't think there's any point in wasting time on that tonight because we're well past December 4th. So I don't think there's any point discussing the first one.
When the first one expired and the second one began.
But the first one expiring had nothing to do with the second one beginning because of how the resolution was passed. The resolution started it on a certain day. So I'm perfectly willing to say that whether I agree with the numbers or not, I'm not going to contest the first one on December 4th. So I don't think there's any point.
Continue then.
So when I look at the resolutions for this, if I look to the resolution passed the 10th day of August. Resolution number six, moved by Mr. Pierpont, seconded by Ms. Blashaw. I won't read the whole thing because I think we basically know it says suspended for 90 days. Suspension is set to commence immediately, will be served in succession with any other suspensions. That was carried by five votes of council. That says Councilmember Gade left the meeting. So that was August 10th I was suspended. And in fact, on your sheet here, there's a mention of August 10th. What I don't quite understand though is why it's down by December.
Why is, pardon?
Well, on your sheet, it lists December and then besides that, it shows August 10th. And you count December 5th to 31st.
Because it was set to begin then?
No. The resolution is quite clear. These suspensions are set to commence immediately and will be served in succession with any other suspensions.
So succession means what?
So I wasn't allowed to participate in the meeting any further because I was suspended immediately. Because I wasn't suspended at the time, there was no other suspension on the bill. So at that point, I was suspended. Can we agree on that?
It states that it succeeds any current suspension, right?
So when this resolution was passed, was I suspended or was I not?
You were suspended until the 4th of December.
It doesn't say that. It says 90 days set to commence immediately and will be served in succession with any other suspensions.
Okay, let's go back to the first one then. The first one, you served 23 days in June and then an appeal was done. The appeal was denied on the 28th of September and you were then again required to serve the remainder of that 90 days. There were two days in September, the 29th and the 30th. And then October, you served from the 1st to the 31st. In November, from the 1st to the 30th. And then in December, the first four days, which totals 90 days. Starting in succession as the resolution states, it would begin on December 5th. And you would have served from the 5th to the 31st. And then an appeal was put in. And you would have served from January 1 to 31 of this year. And then in February, 28 days. And four more days in March, which is today, would total 90 days.
I know that might be the wish for that to be true, but that's not actually what the resolution says. It says the suspension is set to commence immediately and will be served in succession with any other suspensions. At that meeting on August 10th, I was not suspended for any reason. In fact, the minutes show that I was present at the meeting as a member of council. Immediately after that resolution being passed, I was suspended. It said commence immediately. I think they even spoke that night about why that wasn't a good idea, that we should have set a date that it start, we could start the next day, we could do something. But council and their wisdom chose to keep the wording as suspended immediately. I then left the meeting because I was suspended. The next resolution was about an allegation of me breaching confidentiality. After I left the meeting, that was discussed. In fact, in that meeting, Mr. Reeve, you spoke that it was unfortunate I was suspended and wasn't here to speak to that.
Actually, that's not what I said. I said it's unfortunate that you left.
Because I was suspended.
I did not say because you were suspended, I said because you left.
So the first day of the suspension was August 10th. Then, if we move to the next item I asked for you to bring forward, you did not bring tonight. It's a copy of the reasons for decision for the appeal.
Remember what I said, we're talking days only in open session.
Do you plan to keep interrupting or do you allow me to say this?
If you're not going to follow the guideline, I have to interrupt you. We're talking days that you have served to fulfill your suspension or not. And that's what's being discussed in open session. We can get into other areas of your suspension in camera.
So have I said anything yet that was unacceptable for you?
I think that you were about to.
What did you think I was about to say? I don't know why you and I have to fight like this. I was about to make a very valid point. But what is it you think I was about to say that was going to be so bad?
I thought that it veered from the topic of the number of days that you served on suspension. Because of the opening sentence that you just said. Do you recall what you said?
I believe it was to the effect of, if we look to the appeal decision, which I asked you to bring to council tonight and you did not. This is in the matter of the suspension 2021-03.
And that is something that has nothing to do with the number of days served. So my assumption was correct.
Want to bet your seat on that? Because I'm willing to bet your seat on that. I'll finish my sentence.
Enough of the grandstanding. We're here to try to settle an issue that there is disagreement on. And if you want to grandstand.
But you're so sure what I'm about to say, but you won't let me say it.
The sentence that you said veers from the days served. And that was the topic that we were going to be talking about in open session. I made that quite clear.
And I did ask you to explain why you thought I was going to veer. Your explanation is sound.
I'm not about to play any games that you want to play, Counselor Gade. If you have more to say regarding the days that you have served, we will allow that to be said. If not, then that'll be the end of the discussion.
So am I allowed to keep speaking or not?
If you stay within the parameters, you are allowed to speak.
Which I haven't left yet, even though this paragraph is not opposed in any way except by your rule.
And that is part of my job, to ensure that in-camera topics do not get discussed in public.
It's really tempting to say things I'll regret, but I'm doing quite well and staying calm. May I continue?
I said, provided the topic is legitimate topic.
I may have forgotten where I was on the start. In the document that I asked you to bring, which was the appeal decision, which is a public document available to anyone who wants it.
Then you must have one.
But you failed to bring one.
You must have one.
I have it in my hand here.
There you go.
Are you going to keep grandstanding or are you going to let me talk?
No. Go ahead.
Thank you. In the matter of 2021-03, the appeal decision. Paragraph 5. On August 13th, 2021, Counselor Gade filed a notice of appeal. I won't even read the rest of the sentence in case it offends you. So I was suspended on the 1st. If I skip down to number 6 and read only the portion which I'm sure won't offend you. A resolution passed by council dated August 10th, which imposed a suspension against Counselor Gade for 90 days, together with the suspension of his compensation for the same period. So I was suspended on the 10th. I remain suspended on the 11th. I was suspended on the 12th. And at some point, and we could argue the number of hours, I suppose, on the 13th, I filed a notice of appeal. At that time, I had been suspended for one day on the 10th. Another day on the 11th. Another day on the 12th. And we could argue, I suppose, if we want to, but I don't think we need to, about exactly how long I was suspended on the 13th. Then, still in that report, the date on the back page indicates October 20th, 2021. I'll skip back just a little bit. I think this will be acceptable if you may stop me. Paragraph 28 ends with saying, "I have no authority to consider this appeal." Which means at that point, the appeal process ended. Now, we could have an argument about this next part. And so I've actually counted the days two ways for you. I've counted in the way it actually was, which as of October 20th, I was no longer suspended. Er, I was no longer on appeal. I was again suspended. We could debate at length tonight and I don't think we will if council needed to pass the resolution to put my suspension back in force. The law appears to indicate, they didn't. When my appeal ended, my suspension resumed. So certainly, we could count it that way. I have a calendar, which I also asked for tonight, but it's not here.
I have a calendar.
Good, do you have the days written on it?
No, which?
Do you have the days written on it for the suspension?
No.
So here we have August. You'll notice I've counted in two colors. One is pink, one is green. Pink is the reality. Green is what you will probably say I should count by. So I've counted both ways, so either case, three days. Then we fast forward. When we reach October 20th, only the pink numbers continue. October 20th was the fourth day of the suspension and it continued. Now, we could argue whether or not suspensions were concurrent, how that worked. That's why I have two sets of numbers. From the minutes of November 25th, 2021. I'm not present at the meeting. Looks like everybody else is. Towards the end of the meeting, resolution 73, moved by Mr. Finesse Eric, signed by Mr. Pierpont. Whereas, code of appeals directed report is received. Therefore be resolved, Bill Gates has breached the code of conduct and sanctions are upheld as defined in resolution 6 dated August 10th, effective the 5th of December 2021. At a different time, we could argue if that resolution was necessary, but council did pass it. So if instead of doing what the law says, that it started again on the 20th, we instead say it really resumed on the 5th, that is what the green numbers are. So through all of October, the pink numbers keep counting. But the green ones don't. Then in December, the beginning of the month, the pink numbers keep counting, but the green ones don't resume until the 5th of December, as indicated by your resolution, when the suspension resumed. The numbers then continue to count up, both of them count up. As we continue on, we find that in January, on February, or February, January Friday, the 14th, was day 90, according to how the law is written. That was the end of the suspension. But I expect we may disagree and I'm okay with that. Because I'm not here to argue that point tonight. The green numbers continue counting because they had not yet reached 90. So all through January, they count. All through February, they count. Up and up and up, till we reach February 28th, which was day 89. Then on March, there's but one day left, March the 1st, day 90. That was when the suspension was over. I hope we can agree, without wasting our entire evening, that I am not currently suspended.
Again?
If there's questions or more, I think I've proven that I'm not suspended, but obviously others may have other opinions.
Obviously, there's different interpretations and to be honest with you, you have been serving the last two days and all of today. And to facilitate a smooth continuance of this meeting and the movement into camera so that we can discuss one of the more major issues, I would say that this discussion could be carried on at some other time on a one-to-one basis. I'm prepared to move on. How does the rest of council feel?
Yeah.
I don't believe it's worth the energy of us all this evening and we can compare notes at some point down the road perhaps.
So once my own remarks by me, before we move on, I asked for a substantial amount of information to be brought that would have clearly shown this. All of you on council, no doubt, have access to the same information. You've all seen these same things, you could have pulled it up as well. Instead, what council chose to do is use this piece of paper that provided none of the information I requested. It does not provide the resolutions, it does not provide the correct timelines. You trusted this. When I then went ahead and proved this to not be accurate because it was calculated incorrectly, no one here has yet come to the point of saying that may have been incorrect how we calculated it. Instead, we said, gee, you've served three more days anyway. You've served the last two days and you've served most of today. So I guess we'll just move on and agree to disagree. What is so hard for this council at this point to say, Mr. Gade, there's a chance we may have been wrong on this. You have presented a perfectly good explanation. We as a council presented none. We did not bring the resolutions, we did not bring the information. We brought a piece of paper with no evidence to support it.
Okay.
I hope, sorry.
No, I'm about, I am about to call you on the fact that I have offered an all-of-leaf and you are.
Your all-of-leaf was that I served the extra three days of suspension anyway. So you guessed, you let me away with it and we can move on. Say you're wrong!
Do you not hear what I said? I said that you have served as a counselor for the last two days. You are here today. So you are actually serving as a counselor.
So do you think my numbers are correct?
They could very well be. As I said, I would want someone to pull up all of the instances that you're suggesting. The way I have it, it looks like not. You have it, it looks like it is. So let's call it and move on to other more important things. Unless you want to waste more time.
I'll waste 30 more seconds if you consider it a waste. You had every single opportunity to have that information and you chose not to do it. But thank you for agreeing that I am here serving as a council today and have been for the last two days. I obviously misunderstood you. I thought you meant I'd served the suspension for the last two days. Let us move on.
Excellent. Finally, we can move to something perhaps more direct.
Did you want a resolution or was it good to say it's okay?
No. We don't need a resolution, I don't believe. Okay, we'll move on to number 5, which is in camera. Be it resolved that pursuant to section 152 sub 3 of the municipal act, council shall meet as a committee of the whole to close the meeting and continue discussions regarding personnel matters. Mover please. Moved by Counselor Blashaw, seconded by?
I can second.
Counselor Wills. All in favor?
Yes.
That is carried. Next resolution, be it resolved that pursuant to section 152 sub 4 of the municipal act, this meeting shall be reopened to the public. Mover please. Moved by Counselor Foster, seconded by?
Sure.
Counselor Pierpont. All in favor? That is carried. Any resolutions arising from in-camera discussion?
Mr. Rose, did you want to make one or did you want me to?
You have the same one I have, but you have it in paper form. If I need to put it forward, please.
I'm just quickly looking for the paper form I was sent. A moment. Certainly there is a resolution to come, Mr. Reeve. Here's where it's in file. I'd like to move a resolution, whereas James Webb has not suitably performed the duties, the role of CAO. Therefore be it resolved that council terminate his employment effective immediately with cause. And be it further resolved that no severance pay shall be offered.
You have a mover?
I move that.
I will second it.
Hey, do you have a copy of that resolution, please?
Uh, yes. I want to stay down here. That is not placed. I would like a recorded vote, please.
I got it.
Would you like it recorded? Please.
Okay, I will read the resolution. Which is moved by Counselor Gade, seconded by Counselor Wills. Whereas James Webb has not suitably performed the duties of the role of CAO. Therefore be it resolved that council terminate his employment effective immediately with cause. And be it further resolved that no severance pay shall be offered. Babe? Go ahead.
I'll be rather short tonight. We've had a good discussion in camera about this resolution. We have discussed many viewpoints on this particular topic. We have reviewed many concerns that have been brought forward by myself and by others. I have heard things in camera that shake to my core, my faith in this council and its leadership. I find that my concerns have only grown during our conversation tonight and that my concerns are substantive. I believe, given all of the information presented tonight, that the best for the ratepayers, for the residents, for the municipalities on Valley West is that Mr. Webb leaves the position of CAO tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd just like to add that I agree with those points. There has been some very detrimental information passed around. I don't see how anybody can ignore it or deflect it. It is in the best interest for us to do what we have to do. And I'm sorry, I have to agree. We need to move on. We need to have somebody else in the position of CAO.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I disagree. I think James Webb is doing what council has asked him to do. Yes, there may be some issues that have been brought forward. Council has continued to work with Mr. Webb to try to bring the employees and council closer together. And I think he's doing as good a job as we can ask him to do. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
No.
Carry.
No, I just, I agree with that statement. He's doing what council asked him to do.
Hey, you want to close the debate?
I, you know, obviously, there's two different viewpoints here tonight. If Mr. Webb is truly doing what council has asked him to do, if the actions that we're seeing are truly a result of council direction and I haven't been here for many months now to know what Mr. Webb has been directed to do, I only know the actions that are being taken. If that isn't Mr. Webb's fault, then I owe him an apology. Because if the things that are happening are happening with the direction of this council, it shouldn't be Mr. Webb losing his position. It should be most of the members of this council resigning. Because the things that are happening are absolutely unacceptable to the staff. They're unacceptable to the ratepayers. They're unacceptable to members of council who have been targeted by Mr. Webb. And if Mr. Webb didn't just do that on his own, if that was the direction of council and the things we heard in camera tonight, frankly, about the Reeve, the things he admitted in camera to have done are unacceptable. There's nothing I can say except if it really isn't James Webb, council should be taking a hard, long look at themselves where the problem lies. I tend to believe it is, Mr. Webb. But if it truly is council, as the four of you are saying, council has a serious problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Blashaw, would you take the chair momentarily?
Yes.
Over the past hour and 15 minutes or however long we were in camera, there wasn't a free flow of information. And even previous to this meeting today, certain members of council, whether they were sitting. Sitting members at the time, or whether they were suspended members. Continually. Had a barrage going against. Certain members of council and certain members of our staff. That's unacceptable. However, it is reasonable to believe why it's happened. Councillor Gates, by his own admission. A few years ago. Stated his very clear objective. Was to dismantle the municipal council brick by brick. And. If we vote in favor of this resolution tonight. It would be a major brick pulled from the keystone position of this municipality. As far as Councillor Wills go. And his. Desire to have. A new CAO, I believe is. Is based on his dislike. Sincere dislike for the man. And for. The position and the power and the authority that council vests. In not only the current CAO. But any CAO. So I will not be voting in favor of this resolution. I believe it would not be in the best interests. Of the municipality to do so.
Like to respond to the comments, seeing how my name was mentioned. I vote to fire him.
I have that recorded. Councillor Wills.
I would like to add really quickly.
You can add nothing, we are in the vote.
Speak, Mr. Wills, he is not even the chair.
I am back in the chair.
No.
What do you mean no?
You were, I was responding to you because you made a statement as a member of council. You, no, no, let me speak.
You will not speak, you've had your turn.
You chose to leave point of order.
Councillor Will.
Point of order.
You're out of order.
Point of order, you have to take it. You don't take it, you go to court.
You are out of order.
Point of order, you let the chair to sit as a member to make a statement. You mentioned my name, I responded to your statement. You must stay in that chair until I'm done responding. You cannot resume the chair while I have the authority.
By the chairs who respond.
Stop yelling at me. I did not yell at you.
Councillor Balasha is chair of the meeting right now.
Matt, if you were here and had to see this, you would know. Councillor Wills, how do you vote?
I would like to hear what Mr. Wills has to say.
Councillor Wills, how do you vote? The voting has begun.
Are you going to give me ten seconds to defend myself again?
It's the vote, Matt, you have to.
The vote is being called. You either vote or you abstain.
His name was mentioned as well in your statement. He also has the right to respond before the vote.
The vote was called before he requested. Councillor Wills, Councillor Gates. You are out of order.
Call the police to remove me. That's what your CAO did. He wanted the RCFB called to remove me. Why don't you call the RCFB to remove me?
That's the last time I'm asking.
Voting yes.
Thank you. Councillor Foster?
No.
Councillor Pierpont?
No.
Councillor Balasha?
No.
And my vote is no. I declare the motion failed. Two in favor and four opposed.
I'd like to propose another motion.
There will be no further motion.
It's arising from in-camera discussions.
There will be no further motion.
I would like to propose a resolution arising from in-camera discussions. That is the point we were at on the agenda.
And you said you had one, so you are limited to one. We know.
Did you just breach confidentiality? Was that in camera?
What?
That I said there was one resolution?
No, when I asked you out of camera.
Uh-uh, you never asked me out of camera.
It's on tape, Bill Gates. Again, you lie. You twist the truth and you lie.
Will I resign if I prove you asked me in camera? If it's not on this tape that we started while we were still in camera, if it's not here, will you resign over it?
I have a motion to.
Great. My resolution.
To resolve the meeting. Resolved at this meeting shall now adjourn at. Six forty eight PM.
I'll move that.
I have a resolution to bring, I've asked to bring it. Why am I not allowed to bring it? I'd like a recorded vote on this.
Secondor?
Recorded vote, please.
For an adjournment?
Yes.
Go ahead, you're first.
Well, I would like to debate it too, if you're ready for that.
No, we're not debating a recorded vote.
Okay, then have the record vote, and I'd like to discuss the motion. It's a motion that can be discussed.
You don't debate. A motion to adjourn.
You have a resolution for him, you have a mover, you have a secondor, you have a recorded vote. It would appear to me you would have debate. I would like to debate it.
Is everyone in agreement with Councillor Gates' suggestion to debate?
Yes.
I hear of two councillors saying you can debate it. Does anyone have the act to check it?
Councillor Balasha, Councillor Foster. Are we gonna allow this circus to continue, or are we gonna draw to a close?
Just curious, have any of you read the act? Do you know the rules about this? Do you know the rules? I know the rules about if we can debate this. It would appear Mr. Wills knows the rules from what he's saying. Does anybody else here know the rules, including the Reeves? Do you know the rules of if we can debate this resolution? Does anybody? Has anyone checked it? Does anyone read it? What we're hearing, the two members of council say, it clearly says, I can ask for debate on this. Is anyone going to check it?
You asked for a recorded vote, I am calling.
I wish to also have debate. I'm asking for debate.
Debate, debate's denied because of your performance previously.
Are you sure you want to stick with that? That could be a career, that could be a career decision for you.
Well, and. Let's see it happen then. How do you vote?
I'm sorry, could you read the resolution? I'm not sure what it says.
Resolved at this meeting shall now adjourn at six forty eight. It is now six fifty.
No, because we have unfinished business.
Okay, Councillor Wills?
No, unfinished business.
Councillor Pierpont?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Balasha?
Yes.
And yes, for myself, the motion is carried. Thank you all.
Thank you.